Yes. That is started. Okay. And. Mike is trying to be here. Don't want to share the screen with you? Oh, yeah, that will do it. Okay. Great. I just admitted you. There we go. All right. Now, I did hear from a few others that they were coming. All right, well, we'll start in a face. All right, officially starting the meeting, I'm Sue Copley, Chair of the Planning Commission. Oh, isn't that weird? What my computer does when you move the mouse around, you know, all of a sudden you're looking at the wrong. We're back to the, we're back to what we should be looking at. So this is a meeting of the Planning Commission, our monthly meeting. And we're having our meeting includes a meeting with the zoning bylaw modernization project advisory committee and consultants. We will begin the meeting with some initial. Planning Commission business before we get to the zoning bylaw modernization, which is the bulk of the meeting. If you have not already, please sign in. The sign in, it's. Set up over to my right. And I will review the agenda here. I will ask you, though, I'll keep an eye on the screen when I'm looking at my paper, I'm not looking at the screen. I need to see if somebody else is arriving. Or if somebody has their hand up and I'm not noticing that, you're also very welcome to bring that to my attention. A little collaboration around meeting management. So. We will be reviewing for approval some draft meeting minutes. They're not, not all the ones that are listed here, but we will go over the ones that we do have. We'll also be nominating a new planning commission member. We have a review of our past meeting action items, very brief. An update about our joint housing collaboration meeting and next steps that will be quite brief. Which is also in minutes. And we'll talk briefly about the B Trans grant award. And while we're talking about grant awards, I'll just also announce that the Putney was awarded funding a municipal planning grant for comprehensive village plan. So. Nothing more to say other than that's been awarded and we will be making a plan.
Absolutely.
I know, you're being very excited about it, I know.
Very pleased.
It is, it's great news. So I'll just, I'll say a couple of things about those two projects at that time. But I want to by 7:05 at the latest be getting into our zoning bylaw work, our ZBM. And tonight is our first really discussion of content and changes to content. And we'll, we have a number of materials to review. Mike McConnell and Sue Wester will be leading that part of the discussion. Before we're done with the zoning bylaw part of the meeting, just a little feedback from our April 10th. Community meeting that we had, there's a packet, a page in your packet about that. And we'll review our updated project schedule. A little bit of consolidation going on in that. And a chance for any feedback in the meeting? I will just note that our new clerk for the planning commission couldn't be here tonight. She had a work meeting she had to attend. And so Vanessa Long has offered to take notes and minutes for the meeting for us tonight. So thank you, Vanessa.
Thank you.
Yes. Well, I don't know. She's not even on the commission yet. Okay. And. So, and then we'll review our upcoming meetings otherwise. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Hearing none, then I will move to meeting minutes. Now, we had hoped to do more meeting minutes here, but. Really, we may be only able to do two of them. In your packet, you will have. My packet doesn't have it. But your package should have. Three sets of minutes. The first one is from the last monthly meeting, which was April 1st, which was also a ZBM modernization project meeting. And these minutes have been posted for a time. And. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes and then we can open the discussion.
I would move to approve the Tuesday, April 1st, I can plan a patient meeting.
In a second. Andrew, thank you, so you can get the. And then I'll open for discussion, any comments? And I will open up comments to anybody, the approval will be commissioners only. But I welcome comments from anybody about this because largely it was about the meeting. There's a lot of action items that are about setting up for the April 10th meeting. And then a high level view of. Well, there was an election of a commission chair and clerk at that meeting. And. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, then I will call the motion and this will be voted on by the three commissioners who are present. All in favor? Aye. Okay, they're approved. Thank you. The next minutes that I have a copy of here. Is for April 10th. And I will note that these were posted and then they weren't posted. Can't explain it? Why that happened? But let's assume that they, because they were posted, that we can review these for approval. The April 10th meeting was our zoning bylaws modernization community meeting number one, that was at Lenmark College. And this is a summary about that meeting. Oh, yeah, there's another set behind it, okay. See, it's stable. And I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 10th community meeting.
I have an odd relationship to this meeting because I attended via Zoom. There was no one else. Who stayed in that Zoom community past the initial presentation by. That was done, and so some of the content of this is not things I experienced.
Okay. All right.
Well, then I'll move to accept the.
And, and I can second the motion.
Yeah.
So we moved and seconded. Any comments on the draft minutes from April 10? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. And abstaining because you were there for the whole meeting. Fine. All right, now, this next meeting. Was a meeting of the planning commission, it was a joint meeting. It's, this was not zoning bylaws, this was a joint meeting with the select board, the Putney Housing Advisory Committee and the Our Future Putney Housing Solutions Task Force. It was a conversation about how we might collaborate on housing strategies to advance them. And these are minutes. That I drafted with the assistance of VCRD. And Mary Tomford. And what we are doing, it's an unusual thing to have minutes of different bodies. I never got any clear guidance, but what we can do is go ahead and approve them. I have shared them with the select board and the housing advisory committee for the other two bodies who could approve them. But I also was advised, interestingly, by attorney at Vermont League of City and Town, that minutes do not have to be approved. But it is our practice in our town to approve minutes. So I am recommending that the planning commission consider approving these minutes and then we'll send the approved minutes to the select board and the housing advisory committee, and if they want to make some changes, they can do that. But we will check our box and make sure that we have done our minutes. But let me worry about having to deal with changes if there are any. So. We need a motion to.
I'd move that we accept the minutes of April 14, 2025, joint meeting with the planning commission select board. Putting housing advisory committee and our future about the housing solutions task force. And the VCRD folks.
Yeah, and I will second that. Motion. Andrew, you were not at that meeting, so. But we still have a quorum and we can still review this for approval. Any comments?
I enjoyed that meeting, it was nice to see. So many people come together. It was good, very good.
Yeah, VCRD, I thought, did a very good job of facilitating the conversation and engaging a productive conversation for us. And we will be getting a meeting report from VCRD, I've checked in with them about it. It will be sometime this month, I'm not sure. But I think it will be very helpful to our next steps in things like the comprehensive village plan, other things, how do we collaborate with others? So any other comments about these minutes? Hearing none, I will call the motion, all in favor of the minute, approving the minutes of April 14? Aye, aye, two and one abstaining, enough. Thank you. And I'm still catching up on some other minutes. We'll get to those, so that's the minutes. The next item on the agenda. Is one I'm really delighted about. Vanessa Long approached us in March, the select board and the planning commission to let us know if her interest to join the planning commission. She's attended several meetings now, at least two. Yeah, three, I think, great, okay, so number three. And her letter of interest and her resume is attached in the materials in, in the package, everybody has that. And. Given her interest, her background. And willingness to really assist us in the work that we're doing. I would like to recommend that Vanessa be nominated, so I'm nominating Vanessa to join the planning commission. And I would invite another commissioner to second that.
I would second that.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion?
Yes, gratitude.
I, I will just note that when we brought Mary Tomford on as a commissioner, she was the second commissioner from, not, not a resident of Putney. So Andrew lives in Dummerston and Mary lives in Westminster. She works in Putney and much of Andrew's work is also in Putney. But. A quorum of commissioners must be from the town, so we needed another resident. And Vanessa has lived here most of her life, a good part of it, yeah. So we're delighted to be able to also have someone who has been part of Putney for a long time. So, anything you want to say, Vanessa?
I'm excited to be here. I've been digging into the town plan slowly, kind of piece by piece, it's very dense. And so I'm very impressed by all the work that has been done and I'm really looking forward to the process and the collaborative process, I think, more than any outcomes. So, excited. Thank you. Well, I'll call the motion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye. Strong support. And with this nomination, what will happen the next? The next step, the record? Is that I'll be including this nomination to the select board who actually appoints members of the commission. And I will do my monthly report, provide my next monthly report for next Wednesday. And in that report, I will reflect the unanimous nomination of Vanessa to join the planning commission. And they will hopefully take it up at that meeting, and I believe they will.
I will put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
You're ready now, so, yeah, the sooner the better.
Okay? Thank you.
Yep. Great. Make sure to show up to that one.
Yes. Okay. Rolling along here. So I've already mentioned that the joint Putney Housing Collaboration Meeting took place. And that I think there was a lot of interest in building a stronger working relationship. Doug was part of the meeting, as, as was Pip, as was Karen. And I think we're all interested to see, they, they were doing it, there's a lot that we said and they're providing a report of everything that was said. And this is a grant funded activities, actually, the, the MTA, the. What was it called, the Municipal Petnical Assistance Programming? Is the, that's actually the benefit we're getting from that, is that the MTA program funded VCRD to provide assistance to towns. So it was from that, they explained that at the meeting. And. And so we had a number of ideas of how we might work together and what that, what forms that might take, but. I'm recommending to all my colleagues that we just get the report and, and work from that, so. We, I expect we'll have it in time for our June 3 planning commission meeting, so I would want to bring it to the, the June 3 planning commission meeting. Any other comments on that? Okay. The next thing is. We got what we asked for two times now, so the B Trans grant award for the Putney Landing Walkway and Road Crossing. Karen is working on putting that grant in place and adapting it. It does have a public outreach portion for the design, it's design and construction of a walkway that will begin an old depot road, come between the two banks, come across the road somewheres near the library, trying to navigate parking spaces and driveway entrances and exits, but that'll be part of the design, we'll have a community engagement to talk about that design. But when I bring this up, people are excited that we're finally going to have a signal to crosswalk down at this end of town, it's very timely. At the same time, we have been awarded a municipal planning grant to do a comprehensive village plan, which will also be looking at things like pedestrian bikeways, traffic, development, housing. The whole range of issues. So I will be giving some thought to how do we integrate the public outreach between the two projects? Because indeed, we'll be thinking about design. So. They're distinct projects, but they're all related, so. We'll be giving that some thought. Any questions, comments about these two grants?
What was the amount of the municipal planning grant?
Thirty thousand. Thirty thousand.
What's the town?
Twenty thousand. We have fifty thousand total.
Are you going to be putting in RFQ?
Yes. We will be doing that for both of them. Or RFQ maybe for the, the design construction, I'm quite sure exactly how we'll do it.
Like an eighteen month window? I don't remember, they gave you longer than a year often.
Yes, actually, I don't remember what the end date of it, but they do typically think of it as a three year project. But we don't always expect that. We will have. We will need three years for that project, it's, it's not a big, big scale project, so I'm hoping we can do it. Welcome, glad you could join us. So. So that's what I have on that, and we'll have more probably at the June meeting about the schedule. My anticipation is that we would use the summer for planning and doing an RP. We'll be having project advisory committees for both of these, it will give some thought to how these relate to each other. And how is that integrated to our meetings? It will overlap a bit with our zoning, but I'm hoping that we're not, you know, the heavy lifting on zoning, I'm hoping is between now and September. And that we begin these next projects, we just have two grants awarded. One can be trans to do the Putney Landing Walkway Crosswalk and the other for comprehensive village plan, so. We have more work to do. It's good work.
Where's the crosswalk?
It will be somewhere out here across by the banks, library, right? Yeah, so that design will come up with an exact spot, we have to navigate parking and driveway cuts and all of that, but to come up with a safe crossing. Yeah, so we're delighted about that. If there's nothing else to say about that, we'll move on to zoning, zoning bylaw modernization project. And here.
Good agenda.
You're perfect, you know, and look at that, I'm even ahead of schedule, I said by 7:05 or. Okay, and there's a packet, if you want, meeting packet, you've got one. And, and if you haven't already, just at some point, sign in on the signing, the sign in list, it's over there. Okay, so Mike, do you want me to share my screen with you, or how do you want to?
I can share my screen.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay. Look at that. And you're able to, you're, you're able to navigate this, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just, you know, it might be helpful, Mike, before we get started, I just want to go over what's in everybody's packet, because there's a lot of paper there. So first of all, you have the presentation that Mike is about to give us, which is an overview of the changes, the articles one, two, and three. I'll be focusing a lot on. The districts. And the discussion, so the next thing in your packet will be a map that's much easier to see online, but there's a printed version of the zoning district, so at least it's a reference in the conversation. And then you will see in your packet zoning district density net matrix, this is part of the update that Mike will be talking us through today in his presentation. And you see existing as well as changes in that, in that one pager. And then we go into a little, a little more color here, and. This is kind of like a drum roll, and this one is zoning district use matrix. This is a new thing from Putney, I think this is the first time something like this been created, and thank you, Mike, already we're better informed by having this. And we'll be talking about changes to that. And there's a document behind that called District Descriptions, Proposed Changes. And. It was hard to highlight it so you could see it, but you'll see some underlining and lighter text, so you'll see the changes that are proposed. Mike will be talking to us about some of the changes or clarifications to the districts. And then. On the district matrix. Use, the allowed uses. He has some specific comments and notes that, that Mike will take you through, so those, there's that. And that's the material that we have for the bylaws. There is a larger document that I did not print out, and that is the zoning bylaws themselves. There, we had a little difficulty loading it onto the website. In a PDF, we have to do it in PDF with all the changes. Okay. And we had, we had some challenges and, and, so it didn't get loaded and it was almost 200 pages, so I didn't print it. You all have the zoning bylaws in the notebook, so they gave you, that's a section in there. So I think that what Mike is going to review will be sufficient to help you understand what the changes are. And then we go back and look at them in the document, so that is one document that we had expected to provide, but it could not get uploaded to the website. And then the last two documents are just summary of the participant meeting feedback, what people said about meeting on the 10. And that will help us think about future meetings, and speaking of future meetings, we have our schedule, and at the end I'll talk about what's different about that schedule. And what's changed from the last one. Those are the documents in your packet, and Mike will reference them as he goes.
He will. So I'm most opening on sharing briefly the, the document. I think it's kind of, it's a little difficult to get a feel for what the changes are without seeing it in action, sorry. The words on the screen anyways. So, yeah, we're going to break this down into sections, Article one through three is tonight, and we'll do. Four through six and so on, and subsequent meetings, so. Yeah, let's keep up here. There are really four types of changes that we're, we're making here. They'll, you know, serve a purpose and, you know, have a reason. The administrative changes are going to be. The bulk of what we, probably fifty percent of what we talked about tonight, that's mainly in Article two. You know, changes to different processes that Putney has, who is reviewing those? And who's involved, you know, throughout, throughout the, the entire review process. There is review oriented changes, that's kind of the, you know, the reviews themselves. And then who is, who is making, who is performing the reviews and who is, like, how, how ultimately the zoning permit is, is issued. There's some changes that are state mandated and effectively already in action, we're just kind of catching up, or catching the document up, we've done, the state law says now, and then some facilitation changes and that's about kind of creating that environment to, you know, implement the topic. So these are all the types of reviews, not all the types, any left on zoning review, which is, it's more the zoning review or the zoning permit, rather, it's more the outcome of all of these. The site plan review, that's, that's the big one. All, all projects will essentially need one, there's a shortlist. I didn't see 240A, is that like in the somewhere? Yeah, or into the, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a section in, yeah, in the code.
In code, yeah.
Yeah.
Section 240A.
Two pins there, you can expect.
Pip is always. But, but you do have the, the bylaws, you know, in your notebook, so. Maybe I'll just try to call out pages when we're in, if you're, if anybody's looking at that. So that would be page fifteen. Or 248.
So the next review type conditional use permits, CUP, I wouldn't even say CUP quite a bit throughout this process, that's what it means. It's one of the most prevalent review types that Putney has, we're trying to, that's one of the changes, trying to pare that back a little bit, if we can. Then variances and waivers, and those have to do with dimensional standards as they relate to the districts themselves. And then the. Acronyms down the bottom are all the planned districts, so planning unit development, planned residential and planned educational. So in, in Article two. For me as a practitioner, this was kind of the most important section for me, it's really the nuts and bolts of how things get done. You know, I think the biggest change is requiring a certificate of occupancy for, for all projects. And that's really meant as a implementation vehicle, the energy code, commercial and residential. The, the change is that it was previously, you only need a CFO if your project had to go to the DRB, or the developer review board. Now, that's not the case necessarily, and there's reasons for that, that we'll get into momentarily. Another big change that I think applicants will feel is. There's a, there's a type of meeting called a sketch plan review that until now has happened exclusively with the DRB. And now we're allowing the zoning administrator or the ZA, as you see on the screen, to have that review. Sometimes, you know, the timelines might not match up and it might be difficult to prolong the project to, to go to the DRB. And the ZA should really. Be able to inform the applicants as to how, how the project is going to be interacting with the bylaw.
So in some ways, this is providing more flexibility and responsiveness in the whole process, trying to make it easier. That's, that's really the purpose of that.
Yeah, there's still the option to go to the DRB and also the ZA can, can kind of make that call, your project needs to go, it's complex. And that helps out with the ARB for the more complex projects to kind of. Have that in their collective conscious, you know, moving forward as the project also moves forward. Requiring a full set of digital plans, that's also aids in the review, I would imagine that. I would imagine that, especially now, I think it's going to be reviewing most of the stuff on their computer, so. And the material change, that will come up soon as well. But it's basically has to do with changes to the permit, whether it's throughout the process or an issued permit. And we'll get to that in a second. So all, all the site plan reviews are going to be done by the ZA. Site plan review is going to be part of each of the projects that listed on the previous slide. It's also its own, you know, formal thing. That's going to be done by the zoning administrator versus having it done by the DRB, which is how it is, how it happens now. So the permit extension's there, that's where the material change comes in. But now a definition for what that actually means. And this allows, like Sue said, greater flexibility for the applicant. If they, they're just not going to get it done, then we just go to the ZA and they can get that extension pretty quickly, I would expect. So the CUP, conditional use permit is, like I said, the most prevalent review that exists in Putney and the bylaws. And we're eliminating some of the categories, and you can see those there, setbacks, height. Those aren't, those aren't use related necessarily, those are dimensional standards. So they're more appropriate to be handled with a non-use variance or a later. ADUs as well, that's part review change and part state mandated change. The Home Act dictates that ADUs can't have a more restrictive review or criteria for the matter, as a single family residence. So we, right now, ADUs require a conditional use, a new ADU. So we're just eliminating that and hopefully.
And making that a permitted use, essentially, is that right?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, what is the change? The change is to make it a permitted use, it's not like you, you don't have to get permission. Conditional use requires some level of approval.
Yeah, there's quite a few review criteria that go into a conditional use review. And this is just cutting through all that tape.
Yeah, so that's, that's what the change amounts to.
Some of the state mandated changes in Article 2 that, they're related to, to the, to the appeals. They're not necessarily going to be all represented within the document, they don't need to be there in state laws. So it just increases the number of people that you need from 10 to 20. And neighboring communities weren't listed in the appeal section.
So let me just stop here, any questions from anybody? We just went through a lot of technical stuff real fast, some of you are familiar, maybe not everybody is. So questions? Yeah, good, go ahead, Karen and Doug.
As we know, the state makes changes. Our next round, if we're gonna make changes, are we gonna go through an extensive process of this again? I mean, how can we fast track the next state change?
Sure. I mean, in effect, if the state makes a change, state law trumps the bylaw. But I would, I don't know if I'd recommend making a change every time the state makes a change. I would try to compile those and maybe once every other year, go through, this is what we're doing, this is why we're doing it, and make the changes at that point. I, I wouldn't expect for every change in state law that you'd have to go through a process like this.
Okay.
This is a more comprehensive update that, I mean, this is a rare process, I think, across the board. Not many councils here are such an extensive update.
So the ZA needs to be on top of how changes.
It should be, yeah, absolutely. And also keep record of them so that it's easier to facilitate a change in the future.
Mike, I don't know if you know, and if not, maybe the LCT or the town attorney, whether amending our local regs to reflect the language of a newly adopted state reg is a change to our regs. You know, and if it is a change, then there's a mandatory warning process, you know.
Oh, that still needs to happen, for sure.
Well, no, I'm just curious whether it does. I mean, I'm.
Think it does.
I would expect it. Okay.
Peter Pudgy has a hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah. Hi, just, are we going to talk a little bit more in depth about compliance with the energy code?
Do you have a question about it, Peter?
I'm just curious on, on what the, what the mechanism is that's going to ensure compliance with it, since there's really no mechanism at the state level.
The residential building code or the commercial?
Either, I suppose.
The residential is the filing of the form, and that's done with the town clerk. And so that's something that the municipality is well aware of whether or not that's occurred. Though I don't think it's a problem for the zoning administrator to get assurance from the town clerk that the residential form has been filed. The. If you have experience in the commercial world, and this is drawing back to my experience on commercial projects as a market expert, you need state approval, you need the, it depends on what community you're working in. Previously, Putney had an approved local, you know, the fire chief could deal with state permitting requirements. I don't think that's any longer the case. But that process is pretty well documented. You can't proceed, you don't have an approved project until you have all those approvals in hand. So I'm surprised that you feel as though there isn't an approval process for the, the state energy code.
Yeah, you know, the DFS process, they have you post essentially the CB certificate in the building. And, you know, they won't issue your certificate of occupancy until you do that. But it's not really, there's no real follow-up on it, I suppose. So I guess, you know, filing the certificate, the RBs is probably the one that's most, most applicable to most development in Putney. And I, filing that with the town clerk, I suppose, is, yeah, a good way to, a good way to do it.
This language, I believe, is a direct outcome of conversation and language that was put into the town plan.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah, we're not creating the condition, the mandate. The mandate has always existed, it's just compliance with that mandate has been pretty soft. So this just creates at least one step where someone's saying, did you file your form? And not checking the accuracy of the form, but simply the fact that an applicant, you know, a form was, was filed.
Okay, thank you.
It does bring up, I'm sorry, my blast, an issue that is a bigger scale than our world of zoning, which is that maybe the state could put more time and energy into reviewing the mandates for energy performance in buildings.
Yes. And I, I just note that I understand that in a new construction project, Efficiency Vermont, if they're involved in providing incentives for that project, will do a review of the project and do a sort of certificate of, you know, whether it met the building code or not. So there's actually help to do it. It isn't, it isn't without any other help. If you're working with Efficiency Vermont, they, they will provide that.
Can I hear?
All right, Doug.
When I read this earlier, I was confused and I feel confused. Maybe we're gonna cover it later if you aren't, let's find. The fourth and fifth bullets up there refer to allow sketch plans, et cetera, and require full set of digital plans. Could you explain that a little bit?
Sure.
Does the average person have to do a sketch and then do a digital, or neither or both?
So the sketch plan, I don't think it's the best name I've ever heard for it. It's basically a pre-submitting advice meeting that happens now with the DRB, but in the future could happen with the zoning administrator.
A sketch plan is not a sketched document.
Right now, you're a piece of paper, you draw a sketch.
A sketch plan is a name being used for a type of meeting.
But it likely includes.
It should.
A diagrammatic, you know.
Back of the napkin.
Or a draft, I mean, they call them drafts.
Back of an envelope.
So I've gone through this, that's why I'm asking. I've done back of an envelope sorts of things and taken them to Karen or whatever, or actually submitted with a permit request. And then digital, does that mean if somebody has a blueprint, that doesn't qualify? Or does it have to be an electronic digital pad, pen sort of a thing?
A scan typically of whatever not here.
So if I do something in Keynote and make a PDF, is that digital?
Yes.
What if the average person can't do that?
If you draw something and scan it, it's digital. I'm sure they have a scanner at the town office.
I'm just thinking of the person that's illiterate in this sort of.
So they probably shouldn't.
Probably take a picture.
At some point, we might do so.
Yeah, I get a lot of pictures.
To have a digital.
So the conversation.
This is for ease of review.
Wait a minute, slow down.
Conversation over here is that sometimes people take a picture with their, their phone. They're, they use their phone camera to take a picture, and that's scanning it.
Okay.
So there's simple ways for people to provide it digitally. And I think lots of people are used to using their phone to take a picture of, of things these days.
I'm just thinking of the person who's the least common denominator.
Right.
I think they may need some assistance.
Yeah.
If they came into the library, for example.
Right.
That would do it.
But, but if they were unable to create a graphic representation of the idea, they might need some assistance.
Yeah.
Because there has to be some documentation in the form that we use as a graphic form, so.
Not just a, not just a sheet of paper.
Well, what's on the sheet of paper? Is it, is it a blank sheet of paper?
No, a, a drawing on a piece of paper.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm one step before that. If someone's having difficulty visualizing and putting, creating a drawing, you know, doesn't understand the concept of a plan drawing, for instance, then they might need some assistance. But once a drawing has been done, it's very easy through all these technical methods we talked about, to create a digital document.
If they can, if they can follow the zoning code, they can do it.
That's my concern. Okay, you know, I asked you my question.
There was a comment from Ryan there, you may want to read out loud.
Okay.
It's down at the bottom, comments. You move your mouse on the chat.
There's a red circle there.
Bottom bar, chat.
There you go. Hope you're able to sit over it. Yeah, oh, there we go, thank you. I'm also sure we might be able to help if people have questions and need help in creating the formatting necessary. Yeah, that's right. And that could be a role for the zoning administrator. Somebody comes in and says, I want to do something, what do I need to do? What do I need to provide? And that, that's a place where some of this assistance that, that.
We'll be able to help them.
Right.
Worst case, they scan it.
Yeah.
So the purpose of this.
Ken, do you still have that guide, like beginner's guide to a site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, something that Radavera had, which was just a very simple diagrammatic example of what was involved in creating a site plan and what typically is, was what needed for most. You know, so, you know, if you've never done it, you just sort of look at the thing, get some good paper and, you know, tells you how to do it.
And the reason we say full set is that for the more complex projects, they're gonna have maybe a landscape plan, maybe a lighting plan, building elevations.
I'm not concerned about those guys, I'm concerned about.
Sure.
Yeah.
I want to emphasize, I imagine the purpose of this is ease of review for the zoning administrator and ease of document storage, legacy handling, right? So I do think it's worthwhile.
Distribution.
Karen, technically, we're doing it now.
Yes. Yeah. So the application actually has like a sketch plan on the back. And, you know, you just follow the directions. And basically all we need is the house, your driveway, where your subject is, boundaries. So we know where the setbacks are. I mean, it can be a hand drawn picture. And for the most part, people who are just doing a simple application, a hand drawing is fine. And if I'm confused and I ask more questions, but usually, you know, it works.
The more times people who are doing any type of project interact with the zoning administrator, the better, I think. There'll be, there's that information passing between the two, so.
I would just say one good development is that we have a zoning administrator now. It was all on the town manager, which made it difficult to have, there was a workload that was hard to manage with other responsibilities, so.
There you go, it's still a zoning administrator.
Still kind of acting as one, but we have a shared zoning administrator with Windsor and Rockingham. She is remote, she's still learning our process. So I'm kind of guiding her along, it's a transition. And I think, yeah, I won't say anymore. And you have to know that each town's zoning regulations are different, so it can sometimes be a challenge.
Yes? Yes. So Article 3 is really the meat of the bylaw. I want to describe some of the districts themselves, and that's what we're making here. Typically, or in the past, they've been, language that's been lifted directly from the town plan. With the most recent update for the town plan, that's not appropriate anymore, there, there is different now. So we've updated the district descriptions to hopefully better reflect what the intent of the town plan, right? They describe the characteristics, the types of development that, you know, could occur in the, in those districts. But definitely the types of planned districts and subdivisions that are appropriate within those districts. But what is a bit new is the, especially the forest block fragmentation conversation that's, that's currently happening as part of this process, the process that is now represented. Conservation, conservation goals in town plan are more represented. We're suggesting certain districts that are more transition oriented versus like the village center. That's very distinct, it's very, should be a very robust district. And the descriptions now represent that. District, the descriptions are also inserted into the, into the bylaw in various places. Wherever it talks about character of an area, they're now put in based on this district description. That's the character of what that district should be. So that's now kind of mashing up there. And you have all the, yeah.
Please.
So you have them in your packet.
Yeah. I had a comment, reading through these, then really appreciated the clarity and language changes. The one that I stumbled on, it looks like somebody else's comment in here as well, the printed version. But in rural residential, you take the time to define commercial, then you say lower density commercial operations such as lodging, community facilities, et cetera. In the resource district, there's actually been an addition of the word "commercial activities" that wasn't previously in the text. So you say very low density housing and commercial activities, but there doesn't seem to be that same level of guidance. It was just interesting to me that the resource district got the addition of the word "commercial activities" and less guidance about what your commercial activities would be appropriate than the more development oriented rural residential district. That's fair. So that was my commentary. I'm not sure. exactly, you know, like what commercial activities you had in mind when you inserted that or for what.
Sure. Um, I believe that, I mean, various types of commercial activities are, are allowed in, in resource and conservation, but under, um, in home industries, right? You have a secondary, secondary use, which could be commercial, those types of things, which we can be more specific, I'm sure.
Yeah, I wonder about no impact, low density housing, no impact, commercial activity, something like that. I, I, I mean, you want to do this, and it, as a group here, sometimes it can be very challenging to do that.
It was just a matter of, I wanted to point out that.
I agree.
So in the conservation district, we give a definition to commercial activities that would be appropriate, limited to focus on land-based activities. In rural residential, we make the point of defining what might be appropriate commercial operations and activities. But in resource.
They can certainly pump that up.
It got inserted in a place that hadn't previously been present, but didn't get that same level of.
I stumbled on that one too and, and yeah, just even at the level of the wording was changed. And I think it was it now, it could be interpreted as being commercial activities. It says very low density housing and commercial activities. I think there needs to be a comma in there that isn't there anymore. I, I, I just, I, I also.
Make it more explicit than it is.
Yeah, yeah. We can, we can then explain what those commercial activities, as, as it's been said.
Thank you.
Other.
Any questions or comments on the definitions that you see these in the document that?
There's a comment in the document, which I didn't notice when I was reading it at home. Is that from you, Sue, the one that says, notes that it was not possible to find a map labeled area of special consideration?
Well, I couldn't find it either, but that wasn't my initial comment. That was my.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Maybe exclude those from what I shared, but that's okay. Yeah, I, I don't know if it exists, maybe.
Yeah, it was in the previous town plan.
Okay.
And we, we will end up with another one because the areas of special consideration are the wetlands, uh, forest block, um, the natural, what, it's designated, you know, the heritage program.
So did we call that map something different in the town plan?
The previous town plan?
No, in this.
In the current one, I don't think we have.
In the current iteration.
Yeah, I don't know.
We definitely ended up with a map that had many of those things in it that I recall, but.
I, I, I just looked at the page to see if the plan to see if they were noted as, uh, in, in some of them.
So I think it's just a to do is to make sure that there is a referenceable, special map of special considerations.
And there, there will be is, we will, we have to do some mapping for the forest block. Overlay potentially, so I can be addressed at that time.
Are, are we going, are we going through now? I, I understood what you were doing. This plan is being an overview and then we're going to start back at the beginning and go through in more detail how, how are we doing this?
I hadn't anticipated going through the district descriptions specifically, but if you have comments, I mean.
Well.
Yeah. Either you can either submit them to us in writing, which I think would be helpful anyways.
Yeah.
Or probably talking about them right now.
Just, um.
Yeah, it's a good question, uh, Jim, because we haven't, we're doing something new. We're trying to figure out how to do it. Uh, Pip was right when he says it could, we don't have time to look at every, every word. It's doing, you know, 189 pages or whatever. Um, but we do want the feedback and comments, so things may come up in these meetings and you can note them and you can send a comment. And then we'll try to be responsive.
Let me just say, just, as I understand my role being a part of the advisory committee here is to, um, perhaps raise the kind of issues and to be able to explain to the public the kinds of things that may be going through their heads when this is, is gets disseminated and there has to be agreement.
Yes.
Um, and so, uh, you know, I don't have to say, well, I have understanding of all this, obviously. And, but just in, in looking at the rural residential, um, description, I, what it raises for me is my personal experience with this. And wondering how I could explain this to me if I was asking questions about this, you know? Um, and that, that has to do with someone, uh, building or, or establishing a bed and breakfast next door uh, in a rural residential zone. And bed and breakfast is not really defined here as far as the town, it seems to be self-evident what a B and B is. And there, there, there are words that, that, uh, that limit, it says smaller scale retail operations. Uh, commercial operations, like lower density, commercial operations, like logic. And what I experienced was someone said, oh, we want to have a B and B. But then it became a much larger B and B with a, uh, sort of an educational, it became camp going to the dogs. I don't know if you remember, camp going to the dog, huh? Yeah, that's a bummer of a name. Exactly. And it became, and so there was conditional use permit issued for specific definitions of what could be done. Those were immediately violated. And the person came back and said, uh, to the planning commission, I guess, and said, well, I need to modify it because I want to do, and sort of tried to bootstrap into, into a, a more permissive. And so we got this kind of escalating situation, which was, was quite frustrating. Um, and, and I, this is probably beyond the scope of what you can't address every issue in, in the plain language of the regulations. But this was a situation which was problematic. And I don't know if there's any way to deal with it. Maybe a more explicit definition of what a B and B is, but again, you can't.
Here's, here's the definition.
Okay, we do that one now. Yeah.
I mean, yeah. Wasn't didn't that get resolved? I think that resolved by just the the significance of the process dissuaded the applicant.
Well, and, and, and also the fact that they were not compliant with, uh, with wastewater issues and so on. It became clear that there are all kinds of problems. And they backed out, but it was a, it was kind of a major neighborhood issue.
Yep.
Uh, that. Again, I would like to be able to say, to explain to someone who came to me and said, oh, I have this problem. Is this, is the new zoning ordinance going to deal with that kind of thing? It, it won't and probably can't, I guess is the right answer.
That's sort of my feeling is that if an applicant isn't in compliance, that, you know, that, that results in a set of
Right.
problems associated with that. And then if an applicant feels that they want to change, you know, come back for a change of use. You know, they come back for a change of use, um.
I'd say there are mechanisms within the document to address both of, both of those issues, um, on the applicant side end, you know, from the neighbors as well, but just getting to that point is often kind of marketing.
And it is a fine line here, this sense of equity about the right of the individual to, you know, fully utilize their property.
Sure.
And the impact that that might have on neighbors, you know, so that it's a very fine line that you're walking uh, between imbyism and, you know, thoughtful consideration of the spirit of the character of the neighborhood, so, start, start.
Okay. Thank you for bringing it up. I mean, I again, some things are, that's part of the reason why some things are conditional use, because the conditions will be spelled out, for example. And as we try to make things a more permitted use, those need to be things that are pretty clear what they are, um, in definition and as you heard Mike say earlier, general direction is to try to have more permitted uses, not so many conditional uses. But it can be, uh, things like what you're talking about will definitely stay in conditional use, you know? Uh, so that the conditions that would allow it can be prescribed.
Yeah, I think it's a question of, of, to what, of how far, how, how detailed the description of, uh, of different uses can be in the document in order to provide guidance in determining whether conditional use should be allowed or not is the issue and you can't. But it, in, in some of the categories, it says, uh, it gives size.
Yeah.
Uh, some of the commercial things, there's a square footage or that's, I don't, it may not be appropriate.
It's a lot of uses that are broken down by the square.
And maybe that's one to think about in this kind of case.
I, I would, I would still appreciate if you sent me an email. So it makes me look more critically at various sections and so. There's a lot of those, that he wants to come in, so thank you. Are there any other questions?
Just there, as a comment, there are general performance standards. So something like noise, you know, if it's, if, if, yeah, if, it's explicit, you can't anticipate the noise, but there is a standing requirement about noise, um, and I think that stuff was what was sort of bothering up is that neighbors were uh, finding some support in some of the regulations that that applicant didn't seem to bring.
And then there are problems like 15 cars per car.
Right.
On the road.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions? What we were doing is we were looking at the district descriptions. Was there any other question anybody had about these? Otherwise, well.
I would be curious to read them. And if there is any questions.
Yeah.
We think of afterwards.
Right.
That may, you know, or they happen to engage on, on any of these topics. So there are a number of changes that are going to be recurring that relate to all the districts. Um, and some of, some of them are listed here and we're adding the cottage cluster use kind of across the board. We're hoping that that will, um, mesh well with the forest block overlay or potential forest block overlay situation that we're going to be having. Um, it also could potentially, you know, lower some builder or developer utility costs over to expensive water severs expenses and keep them clustered, especially in more outlined or rural districts that would be kind of beneficial for, for everyone, I think. All of the changes, that isn't even really a change, it's just an elimination of the, of the theater use. Doesn't mean that theaters aren't allowed in Putney. Um, it means that theater is already represented in the indoor recreation use type, so uh, that's the more general or broad, uh, use type, so it's eliminated theater use. They have the same permitted conditional distribution. Although it probably should be inverted in the, in the table to the right, so make it more obvious that that's the case. I just thought about that. Uh, but yeah, they're allowed in, um, conditional in the same, same ways. Uh, another change, fairly, fairly large change is we're creating three childcare options. Um, it's a state goal, a town goal to, um, help, um, childcare practitioners, you know, operate in a general sense. Um, right now, there's only two or one that are, one that's not contemplated and we're just adding uh, three, three of them, which are outlined in state law. Uh, one is, you know, the home, traditional home daycare, six, six kids. Um, the small facility, six full time or part time and then, uh, just a regular childcare facility, which is, you know, more than six. Um, this is all outlined in, in state law, so it's not necessarily a big change, but it's, it'll add use categories. Um, and I believe the first two are permitted across the board and the third one is conditional across the board. Um, that might be something that could generate discussion. Maybe Karen has a comment?
I have two, um, items I want to bring up. So cottage cluster that is going to be defined somewhere in the regs, right?
Yep.
Um, so cottage cluster, what I'm picturing is like, it should say five tiny homes all off the road or something. So is that to prevent sub, subdivisions? Is that why this is being added?
To prevent? I don't know that it's to prevent subdivisions. I think it's to modify the dis, the distribution of, like, forest land to subdivision.
Reduce fragmentation.
If, if in the conservation, you have those five units, right, you would need you know, over a hundred acres. And if you, say you have that, instead of subdividing all of it, you're shrinking that footprint into a much smaller area. So like, that's good for forest fragmentation, that's good for, um, you know, cost standpoint.
So cottage cluster meaning like a planned residential football, that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure we've worked it all the way through, but I think the idea is exactly like a planned residential development. But you might define it as a type that is maybe a permitted or a conditional use type. And if the definition is real clear, then um, you might not have to go through planned residential development review. Is, is that consistent with sort of your idea? You know, like what?
Okay.
So if, if somebody came to you, proposal, yeah, and the definition was tight about the number of units, et cetera.
Okay.
Then you might just it's, it's a use that probably would get conditional use approval out of them because there might be enough other issues, but you wouldn't have to go through anything more significant than that.
Okay, gotcha.
Is, is the idea.
All right. Um, theater use, um, so this is same indoor recreation, but, um, let's just say amphitheater, right?
Outdoor.
Yeah. So how are you going to define that? I mean, is that?
I mean, outdoor recreation is its own definition and use.
Well, it's.
I didn't see the category and I have no idea what the definition is.
Yeah.
I, it's not going to mine, but.
So I'm just thinking outside of the box, way outside.
Okay.
Um, because, you know, it could happen. Um.
Yep.
So I think it needs to be clear. And then if it's not listed in the zoning regulations, um, do we compare it to something similar, which could be theater use, right? So.
Let's hold that thought. I'm going to bring up the document at the end of this and then we can go down to that section.
Yeah.
I'm not.
Yep.
Recalling the definition for outdoor rec.
Okay, I'm, I'm reading it and it doesn't include amphitheaters. How did those Greeks do it?
Not a lot of zoning guys. Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, not to get too crazy, but, and I can use this as a fantastic example. This chart ends up with a lot of lines out of necessity.
Sure.
And one of the ways I was thinking you could minimize the number of lines, there's a number of situations that happen like this where we have something that is permitted independent of its size and then there are size breakdowns. So if you like merge these two cells with a P, right? So instead of saying, okay, we have indoor recreation that's permitted here and here, like you could eliminate that indoor recreation line altogether. And instead merge, do, you know, a cell merge here with a big P or however you want to do it. There's like three or four cases where that pattern repeats itself and we can, this would be more from 63 lines down to.
Yeah, that's a good point. I, I see what you're saying.
Fifty. Yeah, and the table admittedly needs work before it goes into the final draft.
It's a cool table, but it is a huge table and somewhat by necessity.
It should allow the trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, thank you. That's a good, uh, way to pair down.
You're welcome to provide these comments for Mike in writing.
Please do, yeah.
I just, I was going to follow that up, saying he's trying to. Yeah, okay. Finish the conversation. Yeah. Doug.
I have a follow-up to Karen's question on cottage clustering. I don't know if it's, I think comments or, I don't know, where Elizabeth.
I don't know if it's in comments or net or where Elizabeth Christie was.
That's.
It's like four acres and they've gone. Is that a cluster in this definitely? In which case, don't we have that already covered?
No, that would have been a planned residential development. Because it was phased, for one thing.
It's one of these definitions that maybe isn't explicit as everyone's understanding. Generally, I think cottage clusters are pretty small units. They have a relationship to each other typically around a courtyard or a central. I mean, it's just a housing type, for example. And so what's going on over there, they're much bigger units. We don't have that same
They're triplexes.
Relationship to each other. And while it was, you know, it was a planned residential development, but this I think would be a much smaller. They're hidden sort of behind.
Down behind church where.
Town hall type situation. I've never even seen.
They're individual units that are combined into three. So you've got three here, boom, boom, boom.
One floor, yeah. One story.
So they're clusters, but they're not what I imagined as a cluster, which is not.
I think the word cottage cluster here is giving.
Those are not cottages.
But I think it will need to be defined. I mean, your point's a good one, Doug, and and I think also Pip's point that we also just have planned residential districts and this might be a special one, a smaller one that would be easier to permit. I think that's what we're trying to.
Totally support this.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Well, I have more technical questions about the like, I like the table a lot. I think I can't really imagine how people without a table.
Right. It was a guessing name.
I do, I did have some more specific questions about it. Is this still an appropriate time to do that?
We can do some of that. And then if it gets to be a lot, then maybe that's, you know.
For sure. Also.
Because it does take some time to chew on it.
It does.
But if you got what I'm curious about what.
Yeah. Well, looking at the square footage of the warehouse categories, they seem not quite correct to me. Like there's a wholesale, a wholesale business, sorry, not warehouse. Yeah, there's one that's ten thousand and thirty thousand and then the next one is two thousand to thirty thousand.
Right.
One's under two thousand, one's under ten thousand.
Yeah.
And one's. So I don't understand this category.
We're looking at lines fifty-seven and fifty-eight.
I think you're getting ahead of this. We're coming up to that, aren't we? Bring up the huge chart.
Yes, at the end. Thank you.
Also, this is.
Do you have some other ones?
Hopping right from the bylaw.
Right.
Okay.
There's no, no changes implemented in any chart here. It doesn't.
Vanessa, did you have another thing you wanted to raise?
I think they're all mostly related to this.
Okay.
Yeah, it is interesting because they appeared on individual pages. There would be a description of a wholesale business and you would see in that district what was permitted. You wouldn't unless you flip the page, see that a different size, you know, was permitted in another district. But it was all done with clear intent to acknowledge the sort of intensity of the use and put the most intense uses in those districts where it was appropriate and either make them conditional or eliminate them in other places. But it is interesting to see now when they're all you know, bundled together, that maybe they could have been described differently, but they're intentless gradation of intensity.
Yes.
Or impact.
Yeah, no, I can see how it would be something that would be created at different times and different places with different needs. And then when you put it all together, it's like, oh, it's good to make sure it all makes sense. Yeah.
I've never worked in a place that didn't have something like this in their zoning bylaw. This is like a must have or we started this. Yeah, I think it's paying dividends already with the place.
So when you're reviewing these folks, just give some thought to that, what district it is and how big the use is or intense the use is or how impacted the use is and whether it feels right. Some of this is really difficult to evaluate. And when we were doing this originally, it was like a little anecdote, but we used the co-op as a sort of memory aid to to thinking about how big a building was at that time and it's four thousand square feet. And it didn't have any of its additions. And so it was easy to sort of think about that size and then imagine, you know, two or three or four times. And so there was a certain arbitrariness to this development. The establishment of these sizes, but it was the best we could do was sort of, you know, mental imaging. And then also looking at some lot sizes and seeing what this roughly drawn little block that's that's nine hundred square feet.
Without drawing this on too much, how big is, anybody know Basketville, former Basketville site, how many square feet is that?
See, you do pull that stuff now, it used to be hard. It's so easy now to.
I'd say ten thousand.
For the built footprint? The two commercial buildings on the retail side or you mean the?
Just the large Basketville building, yeah.
That's probably ten thousand square feet, maybe a little more. Hundred by hundred is ten thousand. And that's probably.
Like thirty thousand square feet.
It's big. It's big. The former Basketville across the
The multiple buildings?
Some of the paper stuff down.
Paper mills. No, it's not that big.
No, but the warehousing down.
The warehousing.
Yes. It is. Dummerston, thankfully.
Well, Mike, I'm going to encourage you to move on because we've got things to.
So I'll go quickly, really quickly through this. There wasn't really much things to be made. Honey basically already had parking requirements that we would have recommended. This table and generally what's in there comes from a state produced. What is it?
Oh, right. Tony's a great neighborhood.
Yes. So both of these are directly from that. They've been in narrative form, much like all the uses and I would just kind of combine them into a table. Hopefully this is helpful as well.
I'm just going to chime in. You know, most of my comments are sort of skeptical. Ride that code skeptically and parking is one of those. It is a necessity in a way. Bradler was always struggled with like minimum maximum is a recommended amount, but it's really hard to calculate like what the use to the space is and it also doesn't account for shared parking. You know, if you have on-street parking nearby or public parking nearby, so it's a making a hard minimum can lead to more pay. It's a tricky needle to thread, but.
There are some outs in our current zoning that we'll retain. Opportunities for review evaluation of adjacent public parking, on-street parking.
Also shared parking as well.
Yeah, yeah. So there are three or four sort of outrigs. And I think the spirit of this is to try to find the minimum number of mandated spaces, sort of like.
It is important to hang your hat on when somebody comes to you with a proposal that is obviously going to create a problem. So it is a evil necessity.
When you think about Next Stage Arts had to create independent parking that met this criteria.
Sure.
It would be either tough or a huge detriment to our downtown community.
Even if you included the on-street and the shared parking, it still doesn't meet, wouldn't meet any of today's standards.
But it, but it, it works. I mean, it wasn't reviewed all that long ago and there was acknowledgement that there were
Constraints.
Places, places that, you know, there was parking available and it seems as though that available on-street or off-street, public, private, you know, that it was sort of works. I think it was a thoughtful acknowledgement of the fact that that use seemed appropriate and that people would figure out the parking. Because there are, you know, there are forty-fifties, you know, put spaces that sort of float around that you can that work.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
There are ways to, you know, massage the project and also the code that the VRV has with their. I like that.
And an acknowledgement that in the village, if there isn't available parking space for all uses to, you know, to happen simultaneously. Luckily, just in, you know, it rarely occurs. But we do have a problem, you know, and it should be one of the pieces of.
Comprehensive village plan.
Try to see whether there's a solution, you know, that has been several talked about over the last twenty years. You know, all of them would require probably a public investment. The town would need to buy, buy some land and people have been hesitant about that. So let's see where this plan goes.
I have one comment. So what I don't see on here is like commercial businesses like Rob's Mobile, right?
General commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good category to add. I think it'll be three or four hundred square feet, but you want to be able to say when somebody comes in with something that's not on there.
Yeah.
Here's my.
Right. So I think that needs to be added. Thank you, Alan.
Yeah, I haven't looked at this one in relationship to our existing parking, you know, I haven't, I haven't just put it together.
Generally, it's a slight decrease. This table represents a slight decrease from what was in there, but there.
Would have to see whether there are any categories that you don't get covered like like that.
Yeah, general commercial business.
I'm going to breeze through this one as well, the state mandates. So the home act is the big one that we're kind of addressing here and in broad strokes has to do with how things are reviewed. Density, there's some parking aspects there too. But the big one is that in specific situations, multi-family, in all situations, ADUs, they can't have a more restrictive review process. They have a single family. And that's why we eliminated the ADU as a, as a conditional use. Addressing that.
And made it a permitted use.
Also duplexes are allowed anywhere a single family are. They already are.
I regret leaving, I did the little AI document and I asked the question. What is it? Why is zoning traditionally prohibitive against having two primary dwelling units on a property? It's almost universal across the map and I don't think I've ever seen it allowed. And I can't logically think why that is. And then they give reasons that it, that it will affect the character, it might look more commercial, but then they, there's all these, then you go into the deeper hole of the threads and I don't think that there's a good reason. I think it's some sort of prejudice.
I think more towns are doing that. Yes, and I believe Bradler does.
And we've talked about it, you know, not, we even fully concluded the conversation, but I think that it's a goal that in certain circumstances, multiple dwellings on the single property should be able to be permitted.
Yeah, it's on our list of things to talk about.
I saw it somewhere because that jumped out at me. It wasn't in a description of what was happening in Bradler or something. Somewhere I got the idea that this was something to be either in the new idea for Putney or at least being considered.
Yeah, yeah, we've been talking about it.
I think it's on paper somewhere.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
I highly recommend it.
I highly recommend it.
I think it is a good way to reduce the amount of subdivision. It doesn't force you into breaking up your property into five or ten.
So there could be planned residential developments that have multiple buildings on a single lot. Big issues that need to be resolved are ownership issues, deed issues, and you know, sort of, is there a homeownership association? You know, is, are they condos? You know, what, what is that relationship?
Is that a town issue that?
Well, Mike.
I wouldn't say that's a town issue. I mean, that's a, that's a builder issue. You know, I don't, I don't know that the town cares. I think this is what you're talking about. Who necessarily.
And how, how to leave the arrow and and how in the market value, all those things are weird considerations, but that's not a town issue.
It's a clearly easy issue to kind of get around if you're someone inclined, if you want to sell something or you condo it, you know, and that's not a huge deal.
The creation of a homeownership association has been mentioned in our regs as part of a planned residential development. So that there's an understanding that you're creating something a little unusual here that may include a portion of the property that is sort of in joint ownership or belongs to the community as a whole. And that needs to be explicitly stated in a legal form as part of the creation of this unique, you know, development.
One, one way to do this with a land trust model. Everything is uninformed, but you go on your little.
So I did think it's reasonable to have that expectation as part of the local review because otherwise nobody's going to do it. It then also I think it's reasonable to allow multiple dwellings on a single lot in spite of all the messiness that it implies.
Karen, you had a comment question.
Yeah, so wastewater is another consideration. Right, yeah. The other comment I want to make is that, you know, sometimes I talk to people and they, you know, they talk about one, you know, ADU, separate ADU from main house or something. You know, and then they start talking, well, you know, I don't know, down the road, you know, if this is, you know, I'm like, well, what happens, let's just say Jim has two dwellings on his house, on his property. And then later down the road, he wants to like sell one of them and we have these new zoning bylaws and he can't subdivide at that point. What happens?
He wouldn't have been able to subdivide it in the first place, I wouldn't think.
That's a, he's stuck with being able to, having to sell both houses.
Yeah.
If on one parcel. If the parcel weren't subdivisible. You know, like.
No, I'm, I'm saying, let's just say he's got, you know, fifty acres, he's got two homes, right? But he's in this conservation district, now has, you know, two overlays and, you know, he can't subdivide it.
We don't know that he can.
Well, is that a risk?
In that situation, he wouldn't meet minimum lot size. And so he wouldn't be able to sell the home unless he did a land trust or a condo.
But, but if if it was sufficient size, it would not be a block to dividing.
Yeah, then you could subdivide. Yeah. I mean, if it was subdivisible at the beginning, assuming that the regs haven't changed significantly, it would be subdivivable later. It might be messy, you know, because if they're really adjacent to each other, you know, they need some variance because you're not.
I just don't think you'd build something, you'd build an additional.
Some people.
Without your knowing.
It's a question I'm asking. Is, is exactly that, building something that if you're going to build it as if it's going to be subdivided in the future, then you're, then you're contributing to that subdivision pattern. If you're building a compact two primary equal size units, not duplex, I mean, it's, it's not that different than duplex except you have two and it's unsubdividable. That's the owner's issue to solve. That's not the town issue to solve.
So I would also say though that
In my opinion.
With a planned residential development, there is a provision that allows the VRV to alter the dimensional requirements. Right, so you could potentially, if you're clustering them, create those three, four, five, whatever, however many lots that you're, that you're doing on a smaller than is normal lot size.
But that's a PRD.
Right.
And that goes at the front end. That means a lot more review and approval. The family who wants their, their kid to move back or their family member to move back and has all the driveway and electric and resources in one area and couldn't and can't build another home without subdividing, which adds another layer of review. And can't build another home without subdividing, which adds another layer of review, would open up a window for affordability.
Mm-hmm.
This is.
Peter has a question.
Just more of a comment on this, on this topic. So we, Wyndham and Windsor recently permitted. Something in Brattleboro that's pretty much exactly this, we're, we're proposing. Um, it's actually, it's two sets of, of four homes on, on one lot each, so four homes on one lot. Um, it was part of a PUD. The town did not require any condo documents or homeownership, uh, association documents. Um, we, that was part of our, our, um, application to them that, that there would be a future homeownership association for those homes. Uh, but that, that just as a point of reference, they didn't require any of the, the legal documents as a condition of the permit.
Maybe they didn't think it through.
Right.
That's kind of.
I'm looking at impacts, you know. With changes in our regs.
Sure.
And I hope we're transparent too.
I think we're acknowledging that higher density might lead to more housing opportunities and perhaps somewhat reduced costs. And I don't think it's huge, but, um, you know, to reduce the land acquisition cost, maybe sharing with some infrastructure, those types of things. Um, there could be benefits from that and. That higher density will have a slightly different feel in the village. And if in the future means that there are these complexities with. Future, you know, subdivision or sale, um, I think we'll do the best we can to acknowledge that that's a possibility. But it's really on the developers to anticipate some of that stuff, you know, it's. Not on the town to hold their hand right over every scenario that they might not have thought.
And you might be busy.
So now that I took it, we'll briefly through the districts and some of the changes in our capacity there. And this is the first one is kind of what we were sort of talking about, we seem to have three or four units of using the plan to residential development review. In, in those more rural districts.
Yeah.
Kind of score use, we've already talked about that. Um, no changes to the dimensional standards. In other districts, we're adding a lot coverage, a maximum requirement, but that doesn't really make sense in the larger, uh, minimum lot size loans. And then just wanted to note that. This is all, this is, these two districts are especially depending, uh, the forest block overlay. Um, the condition of that discussion, so they'll be potentially more, more changes coming this year.
The, the first bullet, under rural residential, this is where I got the idea, is this a, is this a different concept from what we were just talking about?
Well, I just want to put this for you so.
That's a use.
Yeah.
It's different, different use, yeah.
Ah, a different use. Okay, so I misinterpreted this.
It's the chief activity carried out on a lot.
Which is always a single family home, if a single family home is present.
Okay.
Ryan, you had a hand up and then took it down.
Um, yeah, actually this goes back just a, a minute or two ago. Um, where we were saying it, you know, it falls on the developer to, um, you know, figure it out and, and. You know, create the right plan. Um, but I just want to stick in there the reminder that some of the. Quote developers might just be like random people who are just trying to figure out their families. And so it does still fall on them to figure out the nuances of that, but, um. It's also really different than looking at a bigger developer who does this and has a team of lawyers and billions of dollars and, and things like that. So just to differentiate between, um, how people. Uh, how, how we're really catering toward like the folks who. Are living in the mobile home that's falling apart and need to figure out what to do about that and their kids are coming home and, and whatever else and. And, and also, you know, the, the bigger companies that are, are coming in to build.
That's a good point. I think one of the. Takeaways for me for all, for all, all the changes that they're making really is trying to encourage. The interaction between town staff and whoever happens to be, to be building. Um, I think for this specific issue, I can't imagine that it wouldn't come up that, hey. You might have some ownership issues like moving forward or down the road or whatnot.
Hmm.
Um, and that's why I'm trying to encourage more use of the, um, the sketch planning, uh.
The consult.
Views, the, the consultations, yeah, on the front end to hopefully raise some of these red flags to folks who might not be as experienced. That's definitely, that's definitely a call.
Can you explain why you have three unit residential, uh, four unit is conditional? But then you're taking the multifamily three plus from the conditional list? That doesn't make sense to me.
There, I'm glad you brought this up. There was, um. Specific instance which they broke it down in that way, so we're just kind of clarifying that more explicitly. Uh, there was, it was like highlighted three to four units.
Right.
I'm not doing a good, good job explaining it, but it was confusing in the document, so we're just. Separating those two.
Three units permitted, four units conditional use.
Yeah.
But multifamily, which is three plus, is permitted.
Right, so multifamily is now, or maybe.
So why is four conditional? If they're all supposed to be permitted at the same, the single family? Here's.
Hasn't multifamily come to be described as, uh, five in our regs?
It can be.
And that's why.
There's a little bit of difference in nomenclature between some of the state stuff like the Homes Act definitions. And what we've decided, what we, what we're defining, but we define one, two, three and four family. And maybe they're no longer families, maybe they're units and then five, five units is multi, multi unit. Um, I, I think that's the distinction that where our regs will.
This will be a mission to reflect it down that way.
Okay, it still doesn't make sense to me.
Or maybe. Three, three units as a permitted use and four as conditional use, multifamily would be.
Three unit would be called multifamily.
Rise to, there's like a section, there's a section where they explain the rationale. In more than just a bullet point.
Right.
I didn't really get it either, but I trusted, but it, it, there was like.
I might have to look at this chart.
So multifamily could be one building.
Right.
Whereas what you're saying is a four family would be four separate buildings?
No.
That's why it's.
It could also be one building. So this is where it's kind of three or four different changes intersect. The definition for resi- really all residential units in town. Have one definition, one through five, I think. And then rural residential, each of, each of the other zone districts. Did not combine any of those uses except for rural residential.
Well, what did you say, when we say a three unit residential, that does not mean three individual buildings. The assumption there is that they are sharing walls.
Same with multifamily.
Yeah, and that's the assumption with multifamily is that there are shared walls. And, uh, so it's a single structure that has that many dwelling units in it.
That's, that's the multifamily.
That's, that's a three family, that's a two family.
It's a four family.
That's a four family, yeah, or four unit, yeah. And then we've had a side discussion here about allowing multiple structures on a lot. And they could be sustainable family, yeah, they could be one unit, two unit, three unit, four unit, you know, five unit. Structures, you know, there may be more than one of them on a lot was something that we were discussing here tonight and the implications of that. But I think as typically used in the state, those descriptions are for the number of units in a structure.
And multifamily is now five plus, right? That's part of what's happening.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of there it says three plus, so that's why it was removed.
Yeah, so that. Uh, multifamily three plus is not a consistent definition for our current regs.
So be enjoyed it.
Yeah.
Right, because now it's five.
Okay.
Yeah. So are you done?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, um, it says here that added as permitted use is B and B. But this.
Because that table doesn't reflect any. Many changes.
Okay, all right, so this is.
Yeah, that is.
Not this, that.
Yeah.
Okay, so to me, that sort of amplifies the concern.
This is pretty appealing.
Sure.
Yeah.
This matrix is existing today or you're.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not.
There are.
This does not reflect all of the.
Three, four, multifamily is broken out. But other than that, it's taken from the text and put off here. Gotcha.
Okay, so it's, it's a draft in that it's the first time we're seeing it, but it reflects existing.
Yeah.
Okay. I had to read this thing, the new.
Me too.
Approach.
Yep. Yeah, again.
Usually you'd say it's a draft of a new thing.
But, well, it is new because it's never existed, but you're right, that's why it's confusing. It's a reflection of what was existing, but never, never shown this way, I guess is the best way to put it, so. Thank you. This is, this is, this is the kind of explanation that will help us present this to people because it is confusing. So thank you. This is good and your questions are helpful.
I still don't feel like I explained it further.
You're gonna get a few more bites of the AI.
It might help if I showed you in the old document how it looks.
Right.
So I was understanding, not to beat a dead horse, but, um, was that the multifamily three plus was being. Uh, because I see it right here as conditional permit, but what you're saying is you're recommending removing it from.
Making it a permitted use.
Making it a permitted use, which aligns with your previous.
Making it really, yeah, got it.
Yeah, yeah, and.
And maybe we.
That was not reflected in that.
And maybe we need to talk about this in light of the earlier conversation about bed and breakfast, but bed and breakfast currently is a conditional use in the rural residential. And the consideration has been to create it as a permitted use.
Oh, okay.
So is there?
Yeah, yeah, and so the permitted use then goes through an administrative review process as long as the dimensional requirement. So that, um, they get a, you know, expedited administrative approval and not a review by the development union board.
You figure out Airbnb.
I knew somebody who was going to say that.
Our short term red.
I think that's the whole conversation, but I, I wanted to bring it up because it's gotten.
At the moment, our reg should reflect the determination made that Airbnbs are conditional use. And that's where we are right now in the review of Airbnbs.
What's the difference between a B and B and an Airbnb? I mean, I understand.
Well, we'll have to get into the definition so it can get really clear.
Yeah, yeah, this is a long conversation.
Okay.
Do you use the definition that in breakfast in our regs as it stands? You wouldn't be describing an Airbnb when you were done reading, you go, oh, this is not Airbnb.
Well, let's call it a short term reg, yeah, that's a better.
Yeah, that is the term.
Uh-huh, because Airbnb is.
That's, that's actually a commercial name.
Which is a commercial rental, is what it is.
Right.
Yeah, B and B is defined as, as under occupied, for example.
Yeah, but then again, it's the. Same thing, but if the select board had an ordinance, they could regulate it.
Mm-hmm.
They could.
Right.
Then wouldn't have to go and.
Which would be great.
I know.
I really should.
Better.
So we haven't really had that conversation.
But we should, we should.
No, when we get there, we, you know, your recommendation is that this is a select board, you know.
I just heard the article this week about various towns.
Yeah, I see the article, but it's going around like, wow.
The importance.
Yeah, all right.
Addressing short term.
So these are the last two zone districts. And they have a lot of changes, right? This was part of the town plan to kind of. Concentrate, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, yeah.
Development within, within the village, right, whenever everything a little bit culture. So to that effect and based on partially on Pip's, um, analysis of, of lots, you know, within, within these districts with changing the lot width. Uh, making it a bit smaller, this is already really reflective of kind of. You know, what is happening right now or has happened, I guess, over the last however many years. Um, changes are, um, in addition to the lot with, are the introduction of lot coverage as a. Another kind of a density, um, standard. Uh, reducing the maximum setback to bring things closer, closer to the street. It was, it was fifty and now it's twenty five. Um, and then a couple use changes, village residential, um, permitted as multifamily, and I've been practicing cottage. Cluster as we, as we spoke about. And then the village has many more uses to be added as permitted potentially, multifamily, B and B. Cottage cluster, beauty facility, museum, uh, retail and bar tower. And then conditional retail, ten to thirty, ten to thirty K.
I'm, I'm a, uh, pretty strong opponent of the mass setback, especially in the village.
Like having one at all or having maybe twenty five feet?
You, you're, what that's saying is that you have to build within twenty five feet of the front yard.
Yeah.
And there, I believe plenty of parcels where that would be uncomfortable or less desirable and, um. Uh, twenty five feet is not, as I drove down, uh, Kimball Hill. The top, top of Kimball Hill, those are all forty, fifty feet back. So, uh, living on some of the higher speed roads within twenty five feet of the road is not, not desirable. Although I understand the intent, this is how villages were built, compact up against, up to the road, it's smart growth principles. I, I understand it, I just, I bristle.
Is there a more appropriate number?
I don't have a sound of that problem, I really don't.
Well, yeah.
It gets awkward, it gets awkward.
It's interesting because I think, Adam, you just said what, what the answer might be. And you, you talked about when things are very low speed, it's more appropriate to have things compact because it's safer. When you have higher speeds of travel on roads, it is less comfortable, less safe. There's also sidewalks, right, that are providing passage. In areas with fast, so I don't know, I don't do zoning, but it does seem to me there's a difference between. Places where people are traveling at very low speeds versus higher speed. You make a really good point about. The difficulty of living up close to something with high speed.
And quantity of traffic.
Yeah, quantity and speed.
Yeah, quantity and speed.
So I'm just saying those are, and I will, when I throw that at you, Mike, and say that that's a concern and how do you deal with that?
Well, now that I look at the, the chart here. It's not listed on the presidential, so this might be a type of.
Justin Village.
Yeah, it's just shown here within the village, so let me, let me double check that.
I think your point's well taken and I don't know whether we had a reg. I can move it, I can like nothing else.
Go ahead.
Um, that compares the setback of adjacent properties. Is, 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 did we have one like that? I thought it was in there somewhere.
There is something that I'm recalling, I feel like it's within four or five properties.
Yeah.
Classic was the average.
Yeah, which is, which then sort of acknowledges the fabric of the community. It, it may be like. A starting point and I, I don't know how best whether to, to get into all the caveats about this. Or whether to just acknowledge that there are enough situations where it's problematic to just walk away from it.
You know, you think about Kimball Hill, if you're coming down Kimball Hill, the left hand side of the street, the houses are right against the street, the right hand side of the street, the bat hand. It, it wouldn't make sense to me to say if, if they were infill space or something on the right hand side of the street. You gotta be at twenty five feet when all the other houses are seventy five feet or less within the street, at least. So what, what the adjacent properties are seems to be really relevant.
It's a, you know, a, a lot of, it's a prescriptive measure and that's, uh, that's always a challenge.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to hear more about what it means to have. Lot coverage requirement of sixty percent previous coverage.
Mm-hmm. So sixty percent of the lot can be taken up with things like driveways, um, walkways from the driveway to your house. Anything with a roof, shed.
So it's a maxim. Yeah.
This, this reads to me as the other one.
It read, when you said. I read it meaning like, oh, you're required to have 60% impervious.
Bigger driveways.
No, that is funny because I see them do that, but I completely get it. It's like, um. I definitely.
I think you got the feedback, Mike.
Yeah. Now that you say that, oh, obviously.
You're being brave. You're doing this for the first time with us. This is good.
In will.
And we have three minutes left.
The assumption, I think, would be that chair pack would be considered impervious, certain.
For sure.
Right. There are pervious parking option stuff. I'm sure that I might be able to, right? If, if you wanted more surface.
Yeah.
There would be ways to accomplish it. Without increasing impervious surface.
So I just want to note that we, we're almost at eight 30 and one of my rules is to try to end on time. And we are on the last page. Cause Lasswood's questions, he'd been asking them all along, right?
Just take this.
So yeah, I just want to thank you, Mike, for providing this. It's very provocative. Um, I just want to say, I think this is a useful format. We've been trying to figure out how to do this. And I asked Mike to try to pull forward, just what are some of the issues and changes to make? Because trying to go through a 189 page document is, we've been doing it. It's hard. Um, we would not have enough time here to do that.
Every Friday for the past.
So, um, but are there, is, we would do this again, you know, in the next, the next meeting. A format kind of like this will be talking about, uh, the conservation district and the forest overlay and forest block overlay and how to do that. Uh, so the idea will be to present it conceptually, but not go over specific language. You know, we will be getting to specific language. That will happen. And there'll be some drafts, but I think we'll be presenting what are the ideas of what to move, what to change and what to add and what to take away. Uh, updating this table to include those recommendations would be super helpful.
Okay.
Great. So we could have a table that says of as existing and then have another one to say, this is with the changes. Let's, we're using a different color and square. Like the recommendations. Great. Thank you.
I don't know how, um, at one point you emailed out things like the best, this says 422. Is that the date that it was?
That's the date that Mike gave it to me.
Okay.
I'm trying to, it's like getting lots of documents at different dates.
Not to say that I read this anytime before, like while I was prepping dinner tonight, but for some of these bigger topics like forest overlays and things like that, we had them in time to digest them and even send initial feedback, then maybe your presentation could benefit from that.
Yes.
In terms of where we focus.
That was, that was actually the goal this time. And unfortunately the person to post things been on vacation and in town. And I couldn't get them posted. But we will.
Send them to us.
I actually made a plan. Yes, I will send them. I've made a plan that we are going to get everything out a full week, more than a full week. Okay. And that's, we'll be getting around Memorial Day. So we have to, Mike will have to figure out how we do that, but uh, that Tuesday, when we come back would be a full week before Thursday. So we need to get enough. Thank you, Andrew, and apologies for our.
It's okay.
Posting challenges. Lack of staffing and no notice. And thank you Karen on Sunday night going, I'll post them. Thank you. Um, any other feedback for next meetings? All right. Let me just look at my agenda here. Um, we did not go over the feedback from, from the meeting on April 10th, but overall it was very, very positive. People liked the activity. They thought, uh, you're a very good professor, Sue Wester. Uh, good, good presentation. Mike did a great job also of just talking about what the process is and what we're trying to do. And so you can see the comments for yourself. Um, the space worked out well generally for people for that size. So, um, it overall, you know, it was good. Um, if we had a larger crowd, it would have been too small space. So it was just perfect for the number of people that showed up. So, uh, those are some thoughts on that. Um, and there's a project schedule here that's, um, updated. And the, an update that was kind of important, I thought, was to move up the date of completing this kind of review. So the schedule, which is one of these pieces of paper here, very colorful. Let's see. There's a lot of squares on it. Yes. Okay. Um, what's changed on the schedule is that we were going to complete this kind of discussion in September by doing subdivision regulations in September, having taken a break from July 1st. And that just meant the whole process had to shift back way late in terms of getting to community meetings and hearings. We were going to get into April, you know, to finish this process. We want to, we want to be done sooner than that. So my, my pushing was to try to do at the July meeting, uh, add subdivision regulations. And that allows us then for, allows Wyndham Regional to give us during the summer, their first cut on the proposed regulations. We're not going to talk about it till the September meeting, though the planning commission does have an August monthly meeting. We'll do a process check and make sure we're, we're on track and all of that. Um, so that was the shift and that allows us to have community meetings sooner. We still don't have the select board hearing till February or March. Partly because they can't do it in January. We will do our hearing in January, having made a, published our notice, a 30 day notice. We'll do that in December. And then we'll do our hearing in January. Then we'll turn it over, assuming we're successful in the commission at that point approving regulations to recommend to the select board and give it to the select board. And then it will be up to them to do it on their schedule. And, uh, Karen has certainly advised me to keep the, the, um, select board informed about the zoning updates so that they're ready at times. So that's, that's really the gist of the change here is to try to be ready to start a community meeting in September and do one in October. Um, and that way we can be ready to approve something for hearing. So the hearing can be in early January. So, uh, that's the change. And, um, what I'll do is I'll probably send meeting notices out to folks for, for these to make sure you have them on your calendar into the future. All right. And, um, I'll just end by saying that our next meetings are, uh, June 3rd and July 1st, monthly meetings. And zoning bylaws are a major topic for those meetings. And you'll see that on the schedule. Any other comments, questions, feedbacks before I adjourn the meeting? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone. And thank you, Mike and Sue. This was good. Thank you, Peter and Ryan.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
All right. Thank you. Send any comments if you have them. For July 1st. July 1st.
Not having someone.
That's a Tuesday.
Do you have a meeting on Friday where it's done?
Uh, let's just clarify that right now with Mike. I don't have one either, but Pip was telling us it was gone. So say, Mike, are we meeting on Friday?